Okay. In essence, what Thompson and Martin has done is ask that we suspend the rules. And that we not allow each item being read and start to finish.
What rules did you have in your idea?
We have a... McCauley, give you a second.
Can we read whatever what you're just read in private? So that everyone understands what's in question?
Martin has asked to suspend the rules essentially.
Well, I mean, the actual whatever's giving us the authority to do this. The thing you're all deluded about, remember?
It is that...
I asked you how to read it publicly, can you refuse members to ask again?
It is typically appropriate for a presiding officer to visit with a parliamentarian. Not in any sense to pollute or to hide what they're doing, but simply to discuss and be able to...
Is it typical that the parliamentarian, the city attorney individually on their own try to find a solution? To squash debate or anything like that? Or would you call that happen?
That would be an allusion to the conversation that we're having. What we're trying to do is to assist the presiding officer in the conduct of the meeting.
Okay, can you read the rule?
So, basically, councilperson Martin has asked that the readings not be done. And there has been a second to that motion. That would be a motion to suspend the rules, which require two thirds vote. However, additionally, if a member has requested that an item that is before the body be read, not simply a document that they find of information or interest, but the item that they're voting on, it can be read if no one objects. If someone does object, a majority vote is required to order that it be read. So at this point, the presiding officer basically has two things to consider.
Can you tell me where that's at and what document?
In Roberts Rules Order, section thirty through twenty-two. Thirty-three, twenty-one, my fault.
Thirty-three, twenty-one. Point twenty-one, thirty-three?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thirty-three.
Colon. Colon, thirty-three, colon, twenty-one.
And this motion is for item C only. But it can be done for all subsequent passes as well. Okay. Again, to suspend the rules. And that we not have to read the entire agreement. And again, it takes two thirds. All those in favor say aye.
May I like to debate it? You didn't ask for debate.
Yes, Mr. Gardner.
I mean, unless you're giving an apple too. But the federer person to debate it?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so you got another example of, I've made this point over and over and over to our citizens. Never has it been more profoundly demonstratable than it has been tonight that the council has continuously modified the rules to squash debate, to squash conversation, to squash dissent.
Mr. Gardner, I have to review that to, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable.
Is this a motion to suspend rules or is this a motion to not read?
He's made a motion to suspend the rules, basically to change it, we're not going to read.
I thought the rule said that you didn't have to suspend the rules. It's in the rules that he can make a motion to not read.
Not what I said.
Well, that's not, what you're saying he said isn't what he said, so suspended. The rule already says that his motion would squash the reading. I would have to make a motion to establish the reading again. And then we would have a vote.
We're trying to be technically correct.
Okay, well, and can a motion to change the rules doesn't allow me?
A motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, okay.
Okay, again, motion by Mr. Martin, second by Mr. McCauley to suspend the rules and not allow the reading. All in favor?
Can I roll a public?
Yes, sir, you may. Mr. Engelken? Mr. Bentley? Mr. Lunsford? Mr. McCauley? Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Martin? Mr. McLaren? And I vote aye, which is a two thirds majority. So we'll go back to the original motion to authorize mayor to sign an economic development services agreement with the Economic Alliance Houston Port Region for thirty-six month term, beginning July one, twenty twenty-one, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and providing for payments twenty thousand dollars per year. Any questions or comments?
May I make a motion that we approve?
You already, we already have a motion by Mr. Bentley, second by Mr. McCauley.
My bad, please retract that statement.
Mr. Gardner?
All right, so as I was saying, the last item demonstrated the importance of reading prior to voting. Theoretically, eight councilmembers got up here, seven councilmembers got up here, prepared to vote on something. The lawyer was prepared, city manager, the entire city manager's office, and whomever else, and completely missed that the contract would have been unenforceable in the way that it's written, in that there is no date allowance, no unit of measurement. So I think it is incredibly foolish to vote on something without reading it. And I'm going to suggest that any person who sits up here, any person who sits up here and says they have read it, every single word of it, is lying through their teeth. So you can refuse to do your jobs because you don't want the meeting to go on, you want to get back to your families. Or you can do your job and allow fate to happen, allow items to be read, allow councilmembers to participate, instead of doing everything you can in your power, both legally and illegally, to squash all dissent, all debate, all objections. So, so I will, in my time that I have remaining, which I don't know how long it is, I'm sure someone will stop me, I'm going to start reading this. I'd like to use both of my times, so whenever we get to the end.
Mr. Gardner, we've already had a motion and voted, got a two thirds majority that it's not going to be read. It didn't say who was going to read it, it just said it was not going to be read.
Are you saying that in my time, I'm not allowed to discuss the specifics?
That's incorrect.
So what you're saying, so what else am I not allowed to talk about, Mayor? Can you give me my points that I'm allowed to debate on?
No, we're not going to do that. You're trying to do something that's already been voted on.
All right, I give ten minutes to talk about the time.
No, so you get five minutes.
Ten minutes total is what I'm saying, ten minutes total. So I don't think that vote has any reference to what I'm allowed to discuss in those ten minutes.
Did you hear his answer?
I didn't. He's not talking into the microphone because he, once again, is afraid of the citizens hearing.
Right, right. No, the vote's already taken, and it can't be read, so as far as using the time to read it straight, I think that's derivative because of the vote.
So what am I allowed to speak about? Is there anything other than reading? Would you agree, Mayor?
As long as it pertains to this agenda item and you're not reading the agreement, you can say what you will.
Okay, well, I'm not going to read it, I'm going to paraphrase it, which would be allowed, and tell me when my time is over. This agreement is made and entered into by and between the Economic Alliance and the City of La Porte. Whereas the Economic Alliance is a nonprofit corporation, and or, actually, I am going to read it, just force me to stop reading it by ordering me to stop, and then I'll stop.
I'm ordering you to stop right now. You cannot read it, we've already voted on that.
And, and just so I understand the consequences, if I don't stop reading this item, you will have me kicked out of the meeting?
I could.
Well, I'm asking if you would.
I, I could.
And I'm asking if you would.
And I'm answering you that I could.
Okay, then, then under threat and arrest, I'm going to quit my constitution protected rights of reading because you have deemed it inappropriate to read in here. And we will see if, where that falls. How much more time do I have?
I'm sorry?
How much more time do I have? Do I get time back from, from you?
No, you have twenty-six seconds left.
Okay, I'll read the agenda item. The current agreement with Economic Alliance Houston Port Region expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. We receive a request to renew the Economic Development Services Agreement with the Alliance for thirty-six month period beginning July first, twenty twenty-one, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Enter five minutes, Mr. Gardner. Anyone else have any questions?
Like to take the other five minutes?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to take my other five minutes?
You haven't had enough of five minutes, you spoke earlier on the same item.
When was that?
I don't write times down.
But you mean in this piece right here? Now, I haven't heard the presenter ones up there?
Correct.
Okay, I'll take your word for that.
Okay, again.
I'd like to roll a call, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to roll a call, though.
All right, this is to authorize a mayor to sign an economic development services agreement with Economic Alliance Houston Port Region for thirty-six month term, beginning July one, twenty twenty-one, and in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, providing for payment of twenty thousand dollars per year. Motion by Mr. Bentley, second by Mr. McCauley, Mr. Engelken? Mr. Bentley? Mr. Lunsford? Mr. McCauley? Mr. Gardner?
Aye, electee.
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. McLaren? I vote aye, motion carries. Item D, approve a resolution of contractor authorized and city manager to sign on behalf of the state of La Porte for the Houston Nutrition Transportation Services. Mr. Gardner?
I didn't ask for the point.
You asked that item D be hold for debate.
Thank you, sorry. I thought maybe you still might have. All right, Corey, can you tell us about this?
Yes, sir, the City of La Porte partnership with the City of Houston to provide congregant meals for our seniors and our senior, senior center on Broadway in the City of La Porte. Normally, there's a contract that we have in place that they, there's, for us to provide the service, and they provide a reimbursement. I typically execute the contract, this year they're asking for a resolution from this body asserting that I have the authority to sign a contract. It's not really us spending money, the business contract gives us reimbursement meals to serve.
And how many meals do we serve?
So we have, what about, twenty-three on the homebound program in any given day when we, when we're able to serve congregant meals. And by congregant, those are the folks who are able-bodied and can get out to the meal site. About forty-ish a day? Sixty, I'm sorry.
Six zero?
Six zero.
And have we been doing this through the pandemic?
So we have not been really providing, yes, we were providing food, we have not really been providing congregant meals. So what we've been doing is, we continue to provide shelf-stable food for folks to take home and for those that are, that we deliver to their home, for those who are able-bodied. Three times a week, we have a drive-through where they're able to drive through the center and pick up shelf-stable food.
And is this only open to La Porte residents or residents of surrounding communities?
So I think it's, yeah, that's a good question.
As long as they register ahead of time, it's open.
As long as they register ahead of time.
And, and this is specifically for the agreement for Harris County to give us money. But Harris County doesn't cover the total cost, right?
No, so this is, the meal reimbursement rate is about five bucks a meal. So you know, that obviously doesn't include that, all the other things that cost us, it costs us to actually run the program.
So what are we estimating as the cost for us to provide?
You know, honestly, we've never broken it down by cost, by meal, you know, because obviously, the more meals we serve, you know, because we have fixed costs in terms of personnel. But I'd also reiterate that the personnel that are working to put this program together is more than just the meals. They're providing all sorts of programming for the seniors as well, when we're able to have them out.
Which, at some point tonight, or did I just read that, we started that night?
So, yes, that was in the minute that...
Yeah, okay.
We were...
Because then we read it.
Yes, correct, so the last, we've laid it on a protocol that allows us to, many communities are now starting, June one, we'll start bringing...
June one?
June one, we'll start bringing, that's my memory out there. We'll start bringing postpacks to the center with the appropriate protocols.
And if a senior citizen shows up to the center and they are not wearing a mask, are we going to refuse them food?
No, no, we're not going to send anybody away without them.
What if the mayor or this council give you a legal order to tell you to send them away without food?
If the mayor told me, or you're suggesting the mayor walked in the hall and said, Corey, there's somebody at home to give food to?
Specifically, someone not wearing a mask. So if the mayor illegally told you, or if this body illegally told you to deny senior citizens food because they're not wearing a mask, would you follow that order?
I would have a conversation with the mayor, and I, I believe we could have a meeting of minds where, where about we would both agree that we should provide food.
Which would be a new policy, which I guess we'll talk about in a few minutes.
Yes.
A new policy of following the law instead of breaking it. Okay, why not offer more meals?
Well, so this is the demand that we have. My personal opinion is if we, well, I'll put it like this, we have for years used a company called Valley, we purchased a meal, it's calibrated to be the ADA allowance for what seniors are supposed to have in the diet, so it's nutritionally balanced, but it ain't the greatest stuff you can have.
Was that an asset you ever eaten?
I have not, I have not. But I believe if we could ever get to the point where some communities, and I'm probably agree that we did this, we actually built a kitchen, provide, cooked the meals on-site, and were able, now you have to have a dietitian, you have to do other things, but I think if we can ever increase the quality of our meals, we'll, we'll have.
Do you think if, if I were to magically give you thirteen million dollars, would you be able to do that?
Would I be able to do that with thirteen million dollars? Yes. So if I didn't have to do anything else with it?
Yeah, so for instance, the money that we're going to spend to build a brand-new city hall so that us high society get nice buildings and things like that.
Mr. Gardner, that's your five minutes?
Okay, I'd like to use my second five minutes.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to use my second five minutes if no one else has anything?
You can't let someone else speak first?
I can unless someone else wants to speak. Unless you're going to change every two. Do I get my second five minutes?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, so if we were then, instead you prioritize our seniors, for instance, it would actually take a tiny fraction of the thirteen million dollars, wouldn't it?
I, I, to be honest with you, we've never looked at exactly what the cost, so I can't tell you a fraction, you know, how big it is. I mean, obviously, with anything, I mean, you would spend as much as we wanted, right?
Sure, but to build a kitchen, I mean, we're, we all have kitchens in our houses, we know that they don't cost thirteen million dollars. We know that we could build an amazing kitchen for a million dollars, right? Like, better than anything we could ever imagine, right? And so, so we could easily say for considerably less, we could provide meals that you would actually eat or feed to your family, or feed to your parents or in-laws and things like that?
I, I, I think the question could be provided better, but the answer is you have to certainly do.
Okay, so then, let's see. Have any of, I don't recognize the young ladies out there. Did we change the people over this program?
No, no, you're talking about the, the people day in, day out that run the program?
Yes.
No, those are all the same people that run the program.
These young ladies are staff or are they with another company?
The ladies in the audience, so...
And I'm only asking because they keep answering the question for you, which is okay, I'm not, I'm just...
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so they, there are Lindsay friends, who is, as was mentioned, in the...
Oh, okay.
So she's, she's...
A mask.
Correct, correct, so, yeah, so she, she's, she's running all the parts for them all.
Okay, then you can confer, have any of our staff eaten these meals?
I do know that our staff that runs the program has eaten them, yeah.
Okay, and, and do they enjoy them?
You know, I, I don't know if I'd say they enjoy them or not, I would have to let them speak to that.
Can we?
Well, not them, I mean, they don't run the program, they're, they're not the hands-on.
Okay, okay, okay.
No, 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 there's a, there's a frank, creation superintendent that is the hands-on, running the senior program, running the special programs. That's the individual who, that group actually handles meals, serves seniors, congregants at home.
Well, I know that this is an invaluable program that, that takes care of individuals in our community that need some assistance, right, need a hot meal, if it wasn't for this, they wouldn't have maybe a nutritionally sound meal. I think it's a travesty that in the fifteen years that the mayor's been here, he hasn't once asked for us to build this kitchen, to provide better meals and things like that. But he's, year after year, asked for tens of millions of dollars for a new city hall and things like that. So maybe, once we get to that item, later on in the agenda, maybe we can propose a reallocation of funds so that instead of building something, we already have something that's quite capable of, maybe we can feed people in our community that would like quality meals. I would like to make an amendment to the motion. Oh, is there an amendment? Okay. You said, "parliamentary decree," there could be two questions asked on this item, so I can make a motion that's sort of tangential, and then we can still circle back and make a motion for this?
Say it again.
Earlier, I asked how many questions could be asked for, given a genuine item, and the answer was more than one. So if I make a motion that's tangential, has to do with this, but isn't addressing this specific question, can someone else still come behind me and make, make the motion that, that we need to make here, which is to approve this?
Well, it depends on what the motions are.
Okay, I'll make the motion, and then parliamentarians can roll on it, or?
The presiding officer will.
Okay, that's fine. So I would like to make a motion that as long as we have this program in existence, that city manager and the mayor and the head of this department, head of this process, eat these meals as well. And if it's a matter of the five dollars that we're paying, we can subtract it from my personal pay. But I think that if we're going to feed our seniors something, then I think that the people prioritizing our money and things like that should be willing to eat the same thing. So, so are you willing to eat the same thing, Mayor?
I have eaten an houseman, and I have delivered him.
Okay, so then you're fine with this, this one? Would you like a second?
I would not.
Didn't you already second? Is this not, I don't want to break up a meeting, Zach, I'm still parliamentarian, the lawyer wants to tell me. I'm breaking the law, I can propose this for a future meeting.
Right, the only thing council can do is take up what's actually on the agenda, and that's the resolution of contractor. That is, it's either approved or disapproved or tabled, there are other options in there, but that's one thing.
Okay.
What it means, well, what about the council to do?
I should have phrased it differently, then, I would like to amend the resolution to, to support this so that the city manager can do it, but also, in the resolution, require city manager, mayor, and whoever is over the department specifically to, once a week, eat these meals, so that they understand what we're feeding to our citizens.
I might consider that out of order because you can't control what other people eat.
You can control what I say and what I wear on my face, I can't control what you eat. Then we can do whatever we want up here. Oh, you can do whatever you want, sorry, I forgot my place. I'm going to leave the motion out there, if you want to roll it out of order, then that's fine.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve a resolution of contractor authorized and city manager to sign on behalf of the state of La Porte for state of Houston Nutrition and Transportation Services? Anyone?
One.
Say it again.
A motion by Mr. Bentley, second by Mr. Martin, to approve a resolution of contractor authorized and city manager to sign on behalf of the City of La Porte for the City of Houston Nutrition and Transportation Services. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Motion carries, we go to item D, approval of other action to award bid number two-one-zero-one-six, Northside Neighborhood Drainage Improvements Project, contract number nineteen-two-thirty-one-zero-zero-zero-v-six-seven-five to Tannum Services LLC in amount of two-hundred-ninety-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, with a contingency amount of twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars for total authorization of three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars.
Thousand dollars.
Say again?
I thought you said three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars, I didn't hear the thousand.
Okay. You have a question?
I do. When was this money coming in?
Oh, let's see here. March ninth, twenty nineteen.
March ninth, twenty nineteen, which means October first, twenty nineteen, it was in, it was formally in the budget. Is that what that means? Or what do you mean?
That's what this is, grant money.
Okay, the money you're asking us for right now, when was that funded? What budget did it get put into?
Did you repeat that question?
Yes, so, so the amount that you're asking us for has been budgeted at some point in a year's budget. That's coming from our pockets?
Yes, sir, it's in, it's in the budget as a CIP project, it's in two phases. This is the first phase of the Northside Neighborhood Drainage Project.
Yes, so, so when did we put it in our budget? Which October did it pass in?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information in front of me.
Corey, do you have a rough guess?
I, I, I don't, let me tell the, let me tell the man, I don't...
Is it safe to say not October twenty twenty? That was before that?
I, so this is, this is the tax age, am I correct? This is a rank result of the tax act. So the tax act flood happened in sixteen?
The twenty fifteen floods and also twenty sixteen, or the FEMA disaster that references, twenty fifteen Halloween disaster, these funds are made available... these funds are made available, the Texas General Land Office, and La Porte submitted an application and was awarded this portion of money for thirty months.
And that would have been before two thousand nineteen, because that's when the county or the state, whoever, awarded the money to us. So my question is simple, uh, if we've had this money, which it sounds like we've had it for, uh, a couple of years, um, just sitting in the bank, why haven't we started this project?
Number one, uh, there has to be a drainage study conducted. Number two, there has to be design.
When did the, when did the studies start? I'm sorry? When did the studies start?
Um, I don't have it readily available, but I'm sure we can bring that up to you.
You would agree that if we, there is a timeline where this could have already been completed? If, if we got Harris County money in two thousand nineteen?
If we had it designed, uh, more rapidly, it could have been underway sooner. That's correct.
So then I think this is just a question for Corey then?
So, just, um, we'd have to go back through our notes, but based on the, the budget documents we have here, the first allocation was made in, in, uh, nineteen, but in twenty nineteen, the first allocation from our funds, so it's sixteen, seventeen. I'm sorry, sixteen, I think it's seventeen, and so we don't get the remaining allocation filled. So when did we get the make-up from GLA?
Okay, okay, so we've been sitting on this for two years, and we're just starting the design, which means maybe we did the.
No, sir.
Oh.
Design, design's completed. We've already gone up for bid. We're trying to work the bid.
Okay, so design is how we're, you're right, you're right. Uh, so design is how long?
Took a year.
Okay, doesn't have to take a year though, right?
Um.
How long did the design for the third street?
Depends on, depends on the size of the project.
Yeah, well, in this smaller project than Third Street, right?
No, that's not entirely correct. We have, we have two phases to this project.
Okay.
This is the first phase. The first phase is completed, but in order to design this first phase, they also had to do a part, certain amount of design in the second phase.
Okay.
So, um, you would think that it could be done faster?
Wouldn't you say it could? So we agree on that point?
Absolutely.
Uh, so, I've said this before from this dais, about this specific item, uh, there are people on the North Side, North and Over Streets, um, that, uh, feel like they're getting shorted in this bid, um, and I know this because they've told me over and over and over, um, and.
That's your five minutes, Mr. Garland. Anyone else have any questions or comment? Mr. Garland.
Okay, so, they've told me this over and over and over, which seems like a legitimate, right, considering we did a very large project on Third Street, uh, we were going to start a very large project on Seventh Street, uh, before we were getting to this, and when we discussed that item, I remember saying, I don't understand why we have money sitting aside and we haven't done this yet for the North Side, um, and I don't understand how we look at our citizens, and Ray, you're standing up there, this really isn't you, this is, I don't think it is. Uh, I don't know if it's, it's on Corey's shoulders or our shoulders, but I don't know how we look at our residents on the North Side and say, we value you just as much as we value our citizens in other parts of the city, uh, when we have been sitting on, uh, a lot of money, all the money necessary to do this job, and we haven't done it. Uh, and instead of sitting up here at the dais and, um, well, I'm, I'm probably gonna harp on this a little bit, uh, planning brand-new CIP projects, like, how do we plan a new city hall or things like that, maybe the people up here should prioritize the people in all districts, uh, including my district, including on the North Side. Um, and I would suggest, though, that, that this council has a habit of not, the trailer park around the golf course, where the proposal from the mayor was to put a brand-new wrought iron fence around the entire golf course, except for where the trailer park was. Around the trailer park, we're gonna put a chain link fence, and the mayor came in here and he, he got offended when I said the image that that had of, uh, that we're saying that the people that live in the trailer park are lesser than everyone else, but it was his idea to do that, and I don't understand how we keep taking lower socio-economical areas of our city and not prioritizing them. So I appreciate that we're doing this. I would suggest for many citizens, this is really, really, really late, and hopefully, uh, we are prioritizing all of our citizens equally, regardless of if you're living in Morgan's Landing, the, um, if I knew the name of the community, uh, the, the, uh, trailer homes over by the golf course, the North Side, or anywhere else in our city, so, uh, I am glad we are getting to this, but it seems a little, uh, too little, too late, is kind of how it feels, uh, like, I think emotions aren't even made, Mayor, is that correct? Emotions aren't even made? No? Okay, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we, uh, approve this.
Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. Bentley, to approve, uh, award number two, uh, bid number two-one-zero-one-six, Northside Neighborhood Drainage Improvements Project, contract number nineteen dash two thirty-one triple zero B six seventy-five, DeTannan Services LLC, in amount of two hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars, with a contingency amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars, for a total authorization of three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We go to item F, approve resolution twenty-twenty-one dash forty-four, authorizing a resale of tax-linked land property described as lots twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, block eleven fourteen, town of La Porte. Mr. Garland.
Good evening, my name is Chip Sutton. I handle, bring, cactus for, for y'all.
Okay, I thought you looked a little familiar, um.
The part of the sound of the mask.
Uh, but luckily, for you to choose, if you like to wear it or not now.
I mean, if I have to use my glasses, I'm probably gonna have to take it off.
Well, likely the mayor will afford you that, that ability now. Um, can you tell me about what's going on here?
Yes, sir, um, what we do is, uh, we, we maintain, we have created and we maintain a tax re- resale spreadsheet. Uh, basically, it's all properties that are struck off, that is, did not sell up during its own tax sale and were struck off, struck off to the city as trustee. If the taxes are struck off to the city as trustee, then the city has power to resell those properties with y'all's approval. So we, we, uh, with, with the staff's great assistance, uh, we get the spreadsheets out to the public, and, and over, you know, over the last couple of years, three years, we've had a very vigorous, uh, bidding process, uh, uh, many different bidders, uh, excuse me, many different bidders, uh, we do have a couple that, that are repeat, uh, but, but we don't, we do not show any favoritism. Uh, for instance, one example, this four of these bids are, is a totally new bidder that's never bid on property, and, and they, it was a competitive bid process where they were beginning to hit someone who has bought properties to pass, and I feel that my ethical duties will not let me show any favoritism, and so what they, what we do on those situations, and it's four of these, and I can mention the name if you want me to do it, is that we go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, until one party does not want to bid anymore, any, any higher, and then at that point, uh, I have them sign a document acknowledging all the issues, you know, that, that, uh, there's no title policy, uh, you know, subject to zoning restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. Also make them very aware that just because they did it on this property, does not mean it's automatically gonna be accepted by y'all. And I'll go back again, I'll shift, cover this at the beginning. Um, what I do when contacted, and, and, and really, it's quite, it's quite honestly every day. Now, not everybody did on it, because sometimes the minimum bid is too high, but the tax code lays out the minimum bid, and the minimum bid is the, the judge value, or the taxing cost, uh, at the time of the judgment. And, uh, and, and then also I add in post-judge taxes, just to make it clean, tie a bow on it. I provide in that information, the minimum bid information, exactly, that's something they want to go forward with, uh, which I say is probably about a third of the time. Then I prepare all the documentation, I submit it to city staff, they do additional research, and then at that, when they're done with their research, then they submit it to, to y'all and go on the agenda, and that's what we have here. Now, these bids, these eight bids, uh, were four from one party, three from, uh, one LLC, and then one from a, a, a lady and gentleman, uh, and, uh, I'm proud to say on that one, it's fifteen thousand dollar bid, and all these bids, for the most part, are pretty high, my estimation. But I'm pretty, I'm happy to say on that one bid, it's fifteen thousand, from the lady and gentleman, uh, we're also, uh, collecting on one, a one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollar demo lead, so, and so it.
Just for clarification, when you say, for instance, the first one's eighteen thousand, seven hundred, that is in addition to, uh, the minimum bid that's required?
No, that, the, that, what I started off with is I started off with the minimum bid, and then that's the situation of when I was mentioning. Basically, we started off with, I, I don't know at the beginning, it probably was like six thousand, six thousand five hundred, okay? And, and the two bidders went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and then that lady and gentleman, uh, did eighteen thousand, seven hundred, which I think the previous bid was eighteen thousand, and the other bidder, uh, basically said, let them have it.
Is it possible to start getting the, the minimum bid included on the agenda maybe?
It, it typically is, uh, so, so we have the, um, the, the minimum, either the, the judge value or, uh, let's see.
Yeah, I can definitely do that. I, 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 I have it in past, I mean, it can be calculated, but, but you look at the analysis, uh, maybe it's with the eighteen thousand.
Well, and we don't have to break it on the spot, mostly, because, uh, I don't have the time allotment for that, but, uh, okay, I see it's deeper in.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
Okay, so then, uh, I thought Harris County had stopped all, uh, tax foreclosure, resales.
No, resales, I mean, where they, they stopped public sales.
Okay, so how are these stricken off if they aren't?
They're not stricken, they were, these are, like, these, some of these were struck off in twenty twelve.
Okay.
Okay, and so, and so really, the only sales going on, to my knowledge, in Harris County are going on on the board, because, uh, we're doing, y'all do private resales.
Uh, we do private resales.
And you have to do public tax sales.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, now, because Harris County stopped all public tax sales, I think it was April of twenty twenty, and we're supposed to have, had one in April of this year, and, and the judge canceled it the night before.
Okay.
Uh, we hope to have one in July, uh, you know, coming up in July, uh, but, you know, that can be canceled, too. Uh, once we start having those, and we were actually just talking about this earlier, uh, we can start replenishing that spreadsheet, because we sold probably two-thirds of that spreadsheet already, uh, but.
That's this call.
That's your five minutes, Mr. Garland.
Okay.
Uh, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, we have eight of these items, item F, G, H, I, J, K, L, and M. Other than the numbers that are on each one, your answers to the questions are pretty much gonna be the same for each item, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Good, I make a motion that we adopt consent agenda in the items F through M as presented.
Okay. Mayor, point of order?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so in essence, what you've done is make another consent agenda, uh, where our rules clearly say that, uh, any one council person can ask for, uh, any items to be moved to the statutory agenda, uh, which each of these are individual items to be discussed and debated individually. Uh, so, it sounds like you're undoing or moving it to the statutory agenda.
This is not the consent agenda, it's a part of, and I'm considering what you're doing dilatory, and if you don't understand what that means, is intentionally causing delays.
By asking questions about what we're talking about?
About, you've asked a question, you've got responses, and I just determined that each one of these items is gonna have the same response, other than the numbers that are being bid.
You don't know my questions. How can you proclaim my questions to be dilatory if I haven't asked them yet?
I've been listening to them for two hours and twenty-four minutes.
So, so all of them, so the questions about how many seniors we feed, that's dilatory, the questions about how much it costs us per meal, that's dilatory, the questions about, uh, what would it cost to feed more citizens, that's dilatory, to you, those are all irrelevant questions that you have no interest in knowing the answers to?
I did not say that.
Well, you said that you've been listening to my dilatory questions for two and a half hours.
On this side.
Well, we haven't been on this side for two and a half hours, Mayor.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution twenty-twenty-one dash forty-four, twenty-twenty-one forty-five, twenty, twenty-one forty-six, twenty-twenty-one forty-seven, twenty-twenty-one forty-eight, twenty-twenty-one forty-nine, twenty-twenty-one fifty, and twenty-twenty-one fifty-one. All in favor, say aye.
There's a point of order on the table that you haven't ruled on yet.
I'm sorry?
There's a point of order on the table that you haven't ruled on yet.
Which was?
Uh, maybe, maybe we really could take a break. Uh, the point of order was that you have now put these items in essence back on the consent agenda.
I said without a consent agenda, we're grouping these items together because they're all the same.
But they're not all the same. So you can rule on the point of order. I don't know, we don't have to do this.
Okay, I denied your point of order.
It's, I find your point of order, what is it, uh, Lee? Not well taken, or something like that, uh, but we'll just go with what you said. So then I'd like to make a motion to, uh, overrule the mayor's, uh, I don't know how to say this exactly, uh, but to overrule his decision. Yeah, so I'd like to build a decision from the chair.
We have a motion to overrule the mayor by Harris Second. Hearing none, motion fails. We like the original motion, made by, made by Mr. Bentley, uh, second by Mr. Bentley, all in favor, say aye.
To debate it, Mayor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd still like to debate it.
Motion carries. So, item N.
Parliamentarian question inquiry?
Yes, sir.
Uh, are, have, you have now determined that no debate even on that motion isn't allowed?
You did make the motion, you didn't get a second.
No, no, your motion. I said I was trying to debate it, and you went ahead with the vote, so you've now decided that not only have you other rules you have, uh, circumvented, uh, from your throne, uh, you're now deciding that when you make a motion, you can circumvent even debates.
No, sir, what I've decided is that you continue to delay this meeting, and I can, at any point in time, choose to ignore you, not recognize you, and move forward with the business at hand, and that's what I've done. So now we will go to item N.
So then, yes, you have.
Approved resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-two, authorizing the publication of a notice intent to, oh, thank you, uh, notice intent to issue up to thirteen and a half million dollars worth of certificates of obligation bonds for planning, acquisition, design, and construction for new city facilities, infrastructure, and professional services.
Your kingship, may I speak on this one?
Say again?
I said your kingship, may I speak on this one?
If you recognize me properly, you can.
I'm recognizing you how you're acting.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Toby?
I do.
You gonna ask if you're recognized?
I answered your question. Does anyone have any questions? I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, surprised that happened. Uh, it's actually, follow the rules, okay, so thirteen and a half million dollars. Can you tell me about this item real fast? Just thirty seconds.
During the, during, during the P budget retreat, council decided to, uh, create a new capital project for a new city hall, to ask for funding, and we got funding of thirteen point five million dollars to do the new city hall plus other city facilities.
What other city facilities?
If there are any, the language is kind of broad to allow us, if there's money left over, after we do the construction of the new city hall, it allows to do other projects.
So as of now, there are no planned other projects? This is, if there's some change left?
Far as I know, I, I don't know of any, I don't think we discussed any other projects.
No, there, there's, I, I discussed.
Yeah.
And then who brought this item forward?
Who brought what?
The, the new city hall. The, the new city hall.
I'm not real sure, sir.
Do you know who brought it forward?
Council brought it forward.
Are, are you asking how the item was placed on the, uh, budget retreat?
Yes.
I, I had to-
Oh, budget retreat, sorry.
Yeah, uh, I, I also don't have it here, but I, I believe that was initiated by the mayor.
Okay.
I believe. Please correct me if that's not correct. But how we got to the point of being here tonight is that upon discussion with the total body at the pre-budget retreat, the vote was to move forward. And so, so, set, set everything in motion to get to where we are.
Did the mayor propose, uh, any new sidewalks? In the budget retreat, the meeting that was for you, did the mayor propose any new sidewalks?
Well, uh, ju- just frankly, I think you're directing the question toward me, and he's there, so I don't, I-
Well, and frankly, I trust the way you say more than what he says. Uh, so, from, you're the one building the budget. Did the mayor ask you to put anything in there for your sidewalk?
I, I do not remember a discussion of new sidewalks. Of, over, over and above, and now, obviously, I want to be clear, we do allocate money-
Yes, into-
On the routine basis.
Yes, yes.
But I do not recall any specific discussion, uh, about sidewalks at the pre-budget.
Do you know how much Third Street was?
Uh, Third Street, so Third Street was not only paving, it was a drainage project.
Yes.
It was, it included sidewalks on both sides.
Correct.
And it was just under four million dollars.
Four million?
Just under four million.
Okay, and that is, uh, the, the main thoroughfare for that piece of the neighborhood for flooding.
Correct, correct, it was front, center, uh, star, storm, sword, with this area.
Which means Second Street and Fifth Street, uh, assuming prices from then would have been cheaper than four million. Smaller drainage project included, it's just tied into Fourth Street drainage project.
It, it would have been marginally cheaper-
Okay.
Because your pipe presumably would have been, been cheaper. So, the amount of pipe would have been the same because the runs are the same.
Yeah.
And, you know, so it would have been marginal.
So there's three more streets on the side that we could have funded with this?
Funded with what?
With this thirteen and a half million?
Yeah, so, fair enough, I, I think, no, that, those were, that was in two thousand fifteen.
Yes.
I would, I would submit to you that, that, that's a seven million dollar project.
Sure, sure. Uh, so two streets we could have funded with this. Uh, north side, smaller streets, uh, probably three, maybe four, uh, state streets, maybe two. Um, uh, we already talked about the need for money for the seniors, the fact that they're eating. Uh, I'm gonna put words in your mouth, take them out if you'd like. Uh, not the most appetizing meals, uh, and-
But if I could add-
Yes.
Uh, nutritionally balanced.
Yes, they're not gonna die.
And a good option.
They're just not gonna enjoy life.
Well-
But, but we'll keep them alive for a good long time on food.
They, they will be in, in good health. Yes, that is true, yes.
Which is the most important thing.
Correct, that is, that is, I don't wanna leave the impression that we're serving garbage.
Correct, correct. The most important thing is that they are healthy. But then, we all recognize that enjoying our food is, is highly up on there. And, and actually, to that point, um, I know people, uh, who receive meals from those almost, not before, um, they don't eat the meals because they don't taste good. So, uh, so we are giving them the food, uh, but sometimes, uh, you're okay not eating because what you're given is not very tasty, right? Um, so, uh, what about any playgrounds?
I'm sorry, say again.
Are there any playgrounds planned for the city hall for?
Uh, yeah, so we have a playground, a replacement. And normally, we, we-
New playgrounds.
New, new playgrounds.
We have a park master plan that said we need some new playgrounds, more pocket parks.
Mr. Garza, that's your five minutes.
Okay, I'd like to take the second spot.
Not till other people are through.
Of course.
Uh, one second, Mr. Bentley. This is, um, adopting a resolution to issue thirteen and a half million dollars worth of certificates of obligation bonds, not to decide what it's gonna be used for.
Uh, but-
You're through.
Okay, you're, you're, that's fair.
Um, you yourself, uh, I don't believe had anything on the budget retreat because you weren't coming to, or you actually were coming to meetings, but you were leave, left shortly thereafter. When we voted on the north side neighborhood drainage improvements, you weren't here the first time. Uh, you weren't here to adopt the budget. And yet, you had asked, but speaking of sidewalks, you had asked for sidewalks to be put in District Five without ever talking to the, uh, district representative there. And then you found out that the people where you wanted to put sidewalks didn't want them. You wanted to put sidewalks in District One without talking to the, uh, district councilman and found out that people there didn't want them. So you have big, grand ideas about sidewalks. But maybe you should concentrate on doing something in District Four. Mr. Bentley?
Thanks, sir, Mr. Bentley. Uh, please, refresh my memory, uh, at the, at the retreat, I think there were some figures and there's some information showing other city halls, uh, that have been constructed recently, uh, how's this amount of money compared with what you think it's gonna cost?
Okay, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, um, as always, the, the devil's in the, in the details, right? I mean, you know, uh, a lot of variables still in play, but I, I think on a, um, I think this is pretty comparable. The, the most recent city hall in our area was built in Deer Park a couple of years ago. Uh, and so I think this amount is, is pretty comparable to what it was based in, right about a nine out of ten.
You want to add?
Mr. Bentley, I mean, Mr. McColl? Uh, refresh my memory, when we were going and, and voting on this, there was a, uh, a House bill or a Senate bill coming through that we needed to get this in front of.
Right.
Is that still in play, or did that not pass, or did that pass?
I think it's still in play, far as I know.
It, it is, it is definitely still in play. I don't think it's, it's, it's still alive. Why, I, it is still alive. It does have some amendments, uh, but my last read of it still would not, uh, really allow us to, to do this. It, it, it is amended, amended to allow debt for public, uh, infrastructure and streets, uh, but public facilities, uh, are still not, my last read, were not included.
Thank you.
Mr. Garza? Uh, when you say not allow public facilities to be built, uh, is there a second part of that? Without-
They, you're, you're not allowed to, it's not included in the definition here.
Okay.
Uh, which means, well, in, in practice, it means you cannot issue that for.
So what you're saying is that the legislature is going to make it impossible to build buildings in our city? Potentially?
Well, no, uh, that, that's not what I'm saying. What I am saying is that, uh, they will make it, uh, impossible to issue debt to build themselves.
So they want us-
Get issue, uh, bind it in debt.
Okay.
Build a facility.
So we still could build it?
Yeah, i- if, if you could, uh, essentially, you'd have to use cash.
Sure, sure. Uh, okay, and then just to rebut, uh, the mayor's comments, uh, I'll mention a couple of items that were proposed for the budget retreat that no one up here supported. Uh, one of those was adopting the effective tax rate, uh, effectively implementing no tax increase for the citizens. Not a single councilperson up here supported the idea of not raising your taxes. Uh, banning taxpayer-funded lobbying.
That item, those items are not only agenda, Mr. Garza, we're talking about issuing certificates of obligation.
Yes, uh, it's so funny how, uh, we're gonna talk about transparency in a few minutes. Uh, and, uh, it's remarkable the efforts that this council and this mayor go through uh, to make sure that the, uh, citizens have no idea what we're talking about. So, um, so then, uh, back to this, another thing, I asked you what this money was for, or maybe you just volunteered it. Oh, I actually described this, and you said that this money was for a new city hall-
Right, so there's a notice, there's a notice of intent, I don't mean to cut you off on that.
Yeah.
Why are you asking me what?
Well, I guess just yes or no, for city hall and then any other buildings that might be able to be afforded.
Right, drains.
Yes, okay. So then when the mayor tries to allude that, hey, this is just thirteen and a half million, there's not a, a designation for it, it doesn't have to go to city hall, uh, that's, um, intentionally trying to mislead our citizens, intentionally trying to, uh, suggest that this money is not specifically earmarked for a very specific purpose, which is city hall. And then, as you said, if any money is left over, some of these other things, uh-
Well, I want to be clear on something. The notice of intent that we're gonna put in the newspaper tells the citizens exactly what we're gonna do with the money.
Sure.
So there's like four different categories.
But, but what are we gonna do with the money?
Specifically say it's gonna be one thing or the other.
Yeah, but what are we gonna do with the money? So you're backtracking-
It's up to this body to make that decision.
So at a minimum, maybe we can acknowledge that you have changed your, your statement. At the very beginning, you were very definitive, this is what we're putting the money on.
Well, and again, I'm being correct because I didn't want to-
Or you were correct.
I didn't want to make you think that it's just for city hall.
Yeah, or you were correct.
The notice of intent.
Yes.
That we're gonna put in the newspaper.
Yes.
Says for the different place, things that you just spent your time on.
And you were-
So you may not be-
So I'll, I'll take the floor back. I'll take the floor back. So you were completely correct, and now you're trying to participate in the mayor's lie, which is that this money is not earmarked for something specific. And, uh, that's the only reason you have backtracked. You, you are very clear what this money was intended for. Now, now, does eight million go to the city hall, and then, uh, the rest of it go up to drainage or things like that? Okay, but this money has a purpose.
Excuse me, sir, I'm referring to a lie.
I'm, I'm referring that you're participating in a lie, and, and I have no further questions for you. So-
Thank you.
Under someone else's time, uh, you can rebut that if you'd like. But, uh, but there's a very clear purpose of this.
Okay.
The thirteen and a half million.
Very, about that.
And there's a very clear other set of thing, priorities that we could have, including just not spending the money. It's that simple. So you said we weren't talking about these things. Uh, well, that's a simple consideration. Adopt the effective tax rate, drop wasteful spending like this, um, and give the money back to our citizens, and quit spending it on our frivolous projects, uh, that will impact our citizens zero, uh, when we can put money back in their pockets. In the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of a economic downturn, we saw that there's, uh, two hundred and ninety jobs missing in our area. Uh, but if you look at the mayor's ideas, thirteen and a half million, let's, let's start to build nice buildings. Let's start to, uh, to do things so that he can have something with his namesake, maybe at the end of it. I don't know if that's the goal. Uh, but, uh, I would like to make a motion. Is there any motion on the floor, Mayor?
Carry on.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we deny this resolution and instead earmark the thirteen and a half million dollars to pay for the budget deficit that will be caused by, uh, doing the effective tax rate.
Carry on. No?
There is no thirteen and a half million dollars to fund.
Right. Okay, your motion has no merit because without issuing a certificate of obligation, we don't have the thirteen thousand, thirteen and a half million dollars.
We do because we're gonna have to pay those funds back. So, so the money that we would send to pay those funds back, using that on a yearly basis to offset the cost of doing the effective tax rate. Sorry, I didn't make that clear. Okay.
Can I, um, I, 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 just to point out something. So, effective tax rate obviously gets calculated much later once we have value estimates in. So, uh, it's, re- really, we have no way at this point in time what the effective rate is.
It's not the effective rate that matters, it's the budget amount that matters, which, which we do have a semblance of it. The effective rate is just simply, how do we get to last year's budget amount? So, with, with the caveats of the complexity of the question, um, we can still say we're shooting for last year's budget amount.
Okay. So, so the other piece of, of what I, I, and I'm just honestly trying to wrap my brain around this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and maybe, is, is when you calculate that rate, whatever rates you calculate, you don't incorporate the debt into those rates.
Yeah, so, in, in this case, this is, this is separate. So I'm saying, whatever our payment would have been for the thirteen point seven million dollar debt, take that amount of money and help offset the idea of doing an effective tax rate for the next however many years, however long this debt would have been being paid off, whether that's five years, ten years. Adopt the effective tax rate each year, and this is how we fund it, is by using this debt payment that we would have put here. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Corby, does that make sense?
I, I, I think I understand the concept.
Okay.
I, I think I understand that.
Awesome.
In fact, the tax rate is different than what he's discussing, correct?
Correct, correct, but yes.
All we can do is vote, make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-two. To do anything else is wrong. So do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Okay, I made a motion to deny it with instructions to put an item on the next agenda, to use the money to, uh, adopt the effective tax rate.
So here's second. Carry on. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-two, authorize, authoriz- uh, authorizing the publication of a notice of intent to issue up to thirteen and a half million dollars worth of certificates of obligation bonds for planning, acquisition, design, and construction for new city facilities, infrastructure, and professional services.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, Bill?
Yes, sir. I have a motion by me, thing about Mr. Bentley, to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-two. Mr. Angleton?
Aye.
Mr. Bentley?
Aye.
Mr. Lassiter?
Aye.
Mr. McCollie?
Aye.
Mr. Garza?
Externally, no.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. McLaren?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Go to, thank you, Michael. Go to item O, rescind the city report policy regarding the use of face covering for individuals in city buildings and facilities.
Garza? All right, so, uh, I would like to read part of the executive order that got us to this point. Uh, executive order GA thirty-six. And I'd like to use this as an opportunity to demonstrate, uh, that, uh, every person on this dais has broken the law. Uh, up until this point, uh, for each, uh, previous meeting, as you illegally kicked me out of the meeting. Uh, the only difference being that now there's a threat of you being punished. Um, and now, all of a sudden, you're willing to listen to the governor's orders. So, uh, in the executive order, GA thirty-six, uh, there's a whereas. Uh, and just for anyone who doesn't read these things normally, the whereas is, uh, where the governor is laying out his justification for the order, giving, his justification for having the authority for the order, his justification for the need for the order, things like that. So, uh, it says whereas, executive order GA thirty-four, that's the executive order that passed, uh, or that was written a couple of months ago, uh, specifically provides that no person may be required by any jurisdiction to wear or to mandate the wearing of a face covering. And notwithstanding that order, some local governments, insert, La Porte, Texas, uh, some local entities have caused confusion nonetheless, by nonetheless purporting to require face coverings. This order was written because of tyrants like the ones who sit on this council. This order was written because we have a mayor who thinks he's a king and thinks he can do whatever he wishes regardless of state law. This order is saying, because you didn't listen to executive order thirty-four, because you didn't, uh, follow the laws of the state of Texas, the governor needed to make a new order to not just hang a carrot in front of you, but also build a big stick. And that's what he's done here. In the executive order, it says, no governmental entity, including a county, city, school district, uh, and public health authority, and no governmental office may require any person to wear a face, uh, covering or to mandate that another person wear a face covering. That might sound incredibly familiar because it is almost word for word what the last one said. Let's read the last one real fast. No person may be required by any jurisdiction to wear or to mandate the wearing of face coverings. Let's read the new one. No governmental entity, including a county, city, school district, and public health authority, and no government official may require any person to wear a face covering or to mandate that another person wear a face covering. Eerily similar. Eerily similar, maybe the argument is that the people that sit on this dais aren't intelligent enough to understand that we are included in the word governmental entity. Maybe that's the excuse for why we've broken the law. Maybe that's the excuse for why we failed to understand what it says, whatever it says, no person may be required by any jurisdiction. Maybe we didn't have the intellectual wherewithal to sit here and say, oh, that's us that the governor's talking to. Maybe we needed him to treat us like we were little kids. or more like tyrants, and laid out specifically, no governmental entity, including county, city, school district, and public health authority, and no government official may require any person to wear a face covering or to mandate that any other person wear a face covering. It's strange, I don't think that it has anything to do with the intelligence of the people up here, I think what it has to do with is the punishment. I think what it has to do with the fact is that the mayor knew that he could with impunity sit up here and break the law. The council knew that with impunity they could sit up here and break the law, and now everyone on this council, everyone on this dais has been put on notice that doing so might cost you a thousand dollars. And I'm imagining, just like all offenses, that's per offense. We have citizens, a few citizens, we have fewer citizens now, uh, in the audience that aren't wearing masks. Just one meeting ago, when executive order thirty-four existed, those citizens would have been met at the door by a police officer, and they would have been prevented entry into an open public meeting because King Rigby, Rigby wanted to prove a point and prevent a council person from sitting up here and objecting to wasteful spending, to, uh, abuses of power, to things like that. It's a shame, it's a mockery, it's about time, uh, I'm glad that Corby did the right thing and implemented this already. I'm glad that Corby implemented this immediately, I wish that Corby, Corby was complicit in the legality, in the law breaking, in the fact that he allowed our police officers to escort me out, he allowed our police officers to.
Here's, uh, manager, uh.
I'll take the next five, whatever you're ready.
Mr. Bentley?
Thanks, sir, uh, I'll just point out that, uh, the governor's order, as it stands now, in my opinion, is, uh, totally irresponsible in that, uh, I think the decision shows right now that probably about thirty percent of people in Harris County are fully vaccinated at this time. Those schoolchildren can't get a vaccination at this time except those who are twelve and older. Uh, this is an edict from the governor that I believe we are obligated to, uh, obey. Uh, I would make a motion that we rescind our mask policy, but amend that policy to allow us to post fines on every city facility, commensurate with the fact of, uh, masks appreciated but not required, thank you.
Have a motion by Mr. Bentley, go here, second. Saying that motion failed, any other questions or comment? Garza?
It's, uh, it's so comical to me, the transparency, uh, or, or how transparent y'all's transpressions were, uh, it's comical that we have an attorney who's acting like anything is different. Uh, in the last executive order, executive order GA thirty-four, the, the excuse that you use to kick people out of the building, to prevent someone from coming into a public meeting, meeting that you're required to make public, which I, I guess we know what would happen if you weren't required, uh, there'd be a dark room, smoke, and those doors would be locked, but, uh, the justification was, the executive order says businesses and other organizations, and we said, okay, we see that no jurisdiction thing, we see the thing that's talking about the government and explicitly prohibiting us from doing something, but we're gonna attach our cocktails to this idea of we're also a business, you pay for your water, so you're our customer and we're your business. But what's interesting is, this executive order hasn't taken that language away. Businesses still have the right to require us, businesses still have the right to turn people away. The literal only difference is you can be fined for it, the literal only difference is if I wasn't allowed to stay in this meeting, there would have been seven thousand, thousand dollar violations going out. If the handful of citizens who came without masks, if they had been turned away, then several thousands of dollars of violations would have been handed out, that's the only difference. I agree with the concept that this is an edict from the governor. I agree that edicts are bad, I agree that we, we pass laws, but in this situation, the governor has stood up for the rights of our citizens when the council in Leport has refused to, when the council of Leport has done everything they could to trample on their rights. So, goes against my, my principles, but this edict I appreciate, also appreciate edict, executive order thirty-four. Also appreciate the executive order that instituted the mask policy to begin with, that said no jurisdiction shall implement a policy or procedure that is more stringent than this executive order. That executive order outlaid, uh, eight or nine different exemptions, and this council took it upon themselves to say, exemptions be damned, you don't get to exercise an exemption in the city of Leport. In the city of Leport, we will make an edict that is more robust than the governor's, and maybe we justify it, as Mr. Bentley said, maybe we justify it through our, our sense that the governor doesn't know what he's doing, we should be able to do whatever we want. And now it's caught up. Hopefully, the governor has learned his lesson, hopefully the governor will start to impose thousand dollar fines from the onset to prevent tyrants from ignoring him. Hopefully, uh, any other governmental entity in our area will be punished for doing the same. And hopefully, this body has learned to stop infringing on the rights of our citizens. I doubt it, I severely doubt it, but hopefully. Like to make a motion to approve this resolution. Oh, sorry. It's not a resolution.
Have a motion by Mr. Garza to rescind the city report policy regarding the use of face covering for individuals in city buildings and facilities, very second. Mr. McCollie, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Can we have a roll call, Bill?
Mr. Engelken? Mr. Bentley?
Aye.
Mr. Luntzer?
Aye.
Mr. McCollie?
Aye.
Mr. Garza?
Aye.
Mr. Martin? Mr. McLaren? And I vote, I, motion carried, we go to item P, adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one thirty-eight thirty of any of the city council rules or procedure and ethics policy with reference to face covering. This, uh, changes our, uh, rules and procedures, ordinance, uh, to remove the, uh, mandate for face covering for city council members at a city council meeting.
Hold on, I think my, my live stream is screwing up here, let's see. Yeah, black screen. Uh, it's kinda got an asshole keeps calling me, and it, when he does that, it won't recover.
Oh, really, it misses.
They showing a black screen? There it is, okay, so you got voice, so you guys can hear me. Um, that's it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap up the live stream, that's what we were here for, was, uh, everybody could see how they treat that council member, and, uh, to see them, uh, rescind the mask order. So, that's it, guys, appreciate y'all popping in and watching, and, uh, I'm gonna be out and about for a little while, so watch for me go live again if I run up on anything.